Because you know what happens is that some of the people who are potential opposition, they would know my position and how I get around things, or my strategies, or my tactics, not strategies, but my tactics and stuff. So I didn't want to say anything because there was people that are from like NAHC, like the planning commission, and people that are like from the Sierra Club, you know, so there was another, I often left the name of it, but they're opposition to us sometimes, so I didn't want to say like, they've been having a question to do it, does it? I know how to get around it. I don't want to.
To say this is based on fictional events.
It's a hypothetical.
To say, what if this did happen?
It's a hypothetical. But, so Mr. Spada, this is a child free thing, so it's hypothetical, hypothetical. You can do hypotheticals, which I, I've done some stuff hypothetically. One of them was, the recent year I've done, because they're going to use their own electricity, or no, they're going to use their own gas.
Oh, yes. I had a spreadsheet.
Yeah, but the asshole. But they are adjacent to a gas line, so they're not going to connect to it. They could. So if they decided to connect to it, that was my hypothetical. This is the type of thing that they're going to do.
Yes.
But they're not going to, I said hypothetical, if they were going to.
What would be the difference, like, in terms of what you?
Well, they're using propane, and that propane is manufactured differently than the gas, electric gas piped in from some power gas, gas companies.
So I'm trying.
So they're not really taking anything off, I'll call it the, you know, electricity, we call it the grids, and they're not taking it from the, the natural gas grids, they're just getting the wrong for manufacturing.
The best high school football team of all time.
Different creature.
Illis Al, Conqueror.
But if they were, this is what they would do. This were illustrated for.
Is that on the case?
No, I think it's practice. I think it's practice. And the other one is by analogy, and this is something I used to work with, they're pretty much, they have two planets that are very similar in nature, but one does a hundred and one does ten. So this guy emits this note, this guy emits ten of it. You do it by analogy, because it's very, very straight. And like, one kind, one kind of crap, one ounce of emissions. Two pounds, two ounces. Well, you keep going, you keep growing, it's very, so, so Mr. Spada, you need to give that.
I don't know who the two thieves were.
Who thinks that?
Now, Barabas was the thief that they, when Pilot was, you know, they had a choice, either Jeezy or a, a bad guy.
He was supervisor.
Yeah. Played by Anthony Quinn in one of those movies. He was a perfect guy.
Yeah, he was.
Arly looking guy, Mexican too. Came here illegally.
That's true. But it's true.
Like, can you shut the way in? Oh, yeah.
I don't know what I meant, because I don't.
Yeah, this glasses is dead.
I told you. Before you, they did one of the debates, they were, similar to President Kennedy. He goes, does I think this guy says Kennedy, because vice president, he goes, I think I know a little bit.
Well, we're, we have a quorum, I think. I'll call the order of the Planning Commission meeting for January fifteenth, twenty twenty, and we'll start with roll call, please. Here.
McAlroy. Absent. Elliott. Is absent. Millies.
Here.
Whitlatch.
Here.
Here.
Aguilar. Is absent.
Okay, please stand me, we salute our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And our planning commissioner, Rod Treats. Okay, Maria is here.
For the record.
For the record, thank you. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. Under state laws, matters presented under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the planning commissioner. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to comment at the time the item comes up for a planning commission consideration. So that all interested parties have an opportunity to speak, any person addressing planning commission may be limited by the chair, that's me today. In order to be considered by the planning commission, testimony and public hearings must be given at the time scheduled for the public hearing. At this time, please use the microphone, state your name and address, and these are for any items that are not on the agenda. Who's here? You're here.
I'm here.
Anyway, we, we have all commissioners here, so we have a full house. So we have Commissioner Elliott, Commissioner Aguilar, Whitlatch, Wayne Millies, Maria McAlroy, Ed Diaz, and Steve Pearson. We're a hundred percent.
I'm sorry for being late, I forgot there was fog. I haven't driven in it yet, for sure.
Excuse, we're cutting your pay by half today, so. We get a little stipend, but it's like a hundred dollars, so. Anyway, okay, we'll go to the approval of minutes, so I want to make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second. Oh, motion, I thought you were motioning, sorry.
Okay, you have a second, please?
Second.
May open vote.
That was Commissioner McAlroy make moved, and then now we.
I seconded.
You seconded, okay, everybody vote. Okay, moving right along, we have a continued public hearing, and so it's an amendment to the general plan GPA one seven zero zero seven for two thousand nineteen Lemon Cove Community Plan Zoning Ordinance Amendment, PZC nineteen dash zero one six, comma, PZC nineteen dash zero one seven, and PC, PZC one seven zero seven. And I'm just going to go to our staff members, so, give it, let us have it, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman Whitlatch, members of the commission, good morning. Dave Bryant, Chief Planner, Special Projects, Tulare County RMA, put together a consideration this morning, as continued from the December eleventh Planning Commission meeting, is General Plan Amendment GPA seventeen dash zero zero seven, the Lemon Cove twenty nineteen Community Plan. The request is to adjourn the planning meeting. An initial study mitigated negative declaration monitoring program. The general plan amendment consists of the Lemon Cove Community Plan. During this process, staff has conducted approximately seven community outreach meetings, both with the Lemon Cove Sanitary District between August and December of twenty nineteen, and with the Sequoia Union School District Board meeting on the September twelfth, and community outreach at the Sequoia Union School in November, which was a, an open public In addition to the general plan amendment, there are several zoning ordinance recommendations to incorporate an update to section eighteen point nine to provide for mixed-use overlays, to also incorporate section sixteen by right uses, and an amendment to the existing zoning districts within the community to provide for an updated rezoning plan, which is PZC seventeen dash zero zero seven. As a clarification in regards to staff recommendations, this would be your recommendation to the Tulare County Board of Supervisors for their final action. In regards to the location, Lemon Cove is located along Highway one ninety-eight, which is southwest of Wood Lake, and east of Exeter, and southwest of Three Rivers. In regards to the environmental document, a mitigated negative declaration, mitigation monitoring, and reporting program is recommended. There were no significant impacts that were identified as part of that analysis. Less than significant impacts with mitigation were for biological resources, cultural resources, tribal cultural resources, and mandatory findings of significance to require pre-construction surveys address those less than significant impacts with mitigation. There was a technical memorandum for air quality, energy, and greenhouse gas, which also included a response to the comments that were received. So for general plan amendments seventeen dash zero zero seven, it would be to recommend to the Board of Supervisors to certify, adopt the mitigated negative declaration, and mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the Lemon Cove Community Plan, a general plan amendment GPA seventeen dash zero zero seven. Existing Lemon Cove Urban Development Boundary and Sanitary District Boundary are displayed here in this exhibit. The existing Sanitary District Boundary comprises about twenty-four acres, and the sphere of influence is coterminous with the UDB that is currently adopted. The recommendations in regards to the adopted land use, there are no changes in regards to the base land use of being mixed use, however, it's recommended that the UDB is increased by approximately four hundred, excuse me, by two hundred and sixty-nine acres, which would increase the UDB from approximately four hundred acres to six hundred and seventy acres. The UDB that's proposed is essentially squared off with zoning districts, existing zoning districts, or parcel lines. The current population as of twenty seventeen is estimated at two hundred and thirty-two persons. Median household income is about fifty-two thousand, there are approximately one hundred and fifteen housing units, eighty-four percent of those are single-family, one-unit detached residences. Approximately eighty-three percent of the existing residences within the community are owner-occupied, and water and sewer within the Lemon Cove Sanitary District is provided to the residents currently residing within that twenty-four acre area inside the district. In regards to existing and proposed zoning districts, the exhibit on the left is the existing zoning, predominantly A-one zoning, which is the light, light brown color here. Rural residential zoning to the south, some rural residential zoning in and around the Central Business District with some existing commercial zoning that is located immediately adjacent to the state highway. For the proposed zoning, there are several objectives that staff was looking to accomplish, again, to provide for mixed-use overlay zoning, which is currently recommended in the Central Business District area to properties that are currently zoned C-two. We received several property owner requests for C-three mixed-use zoning with, again, within the Central Business District area. Parcels to the, to the north recommending C-three mixed-use for the Griggs propane property to the, the north. And then there is a gas station mini-mart recommending for C-two mixed-use. And then there's an existing M-one zone district, which is being recommended to retain its existing zoning to the north. To the south, the school is being recommended for professional office zoning, which would allow for the location of a healthcare clinic at some point in the future without going through rezoning or any type of a special use permit process. And the RV park to the south recommending commercial recreation zoning for that particular parcel.
It's existing, right? The RV park?
Yes, yeah, it's been existing for a number of years.
Well, Dave, can you point out, we, we have a letter, we'll, we'll probably hear from there, but Mr. and Mrs. Pensar, where's their property?
Their property is located right here with the proposed for rural residential zoning.
Okay, thank you.
The next slide is the proposed zoning changes. As, as you can see, a majority of the existing zoning is being retained throughout the community. The, again, the substantial changes that are being recommended to approximately thirty-three parcels within the proposed urban development boundary, again, are designating existing commercial properties here in the north as either C-two mixed-use or C-three mixed-use. Near the Central Business District of the, of the community, there are a number of parcels that were already zoned C-two, which are being recommended for C-two mixed-use. We, we received approximately three property owner requests in the Central Business District to the north here for the, there's currently a church located on this property, request for C-two mixed-use. And then we received two property owner requests for C-three mixed-use in this area here, in the southern part, central to southern part of the Central Business District. A couple of other C-two mixed-use recommendations, one here at the, at the fire station, and then another property owner request located to the southwest. And again, as I had mentioned earlier, recommending professional office for the school to accommodate a future healthcare clinic, similar to the partnerships that have been developed in other communities, such as Traver and Terabella. To the south, recommending a change of zone to commercial recreation to reflect the existing use there. And then a change from, I believe, AE-ten in and around the school to rural residential to help facilitate future residential development in and around the school to promote safe routes to schools, and to minimize vehicle miles traveled.
Well, AE-ten, refresh my memory, you, can you build five thousand square foot lots if you have sewer?
In regards to the sewer, it's currently limited just to the twenty-four acres in the, within the Central Business District. Outside of that, the, with the new lamp program, there would be essentially either one or two acre minimums depending on the presence, without sewer, without, without the presence of sewer, there would be limitations to two acres under the lamp, or engineered septic systems could provide for a potential variance, and one acre lots could be allowed. With, with the RA, with domestic water, the minimum lot size would be about twelve thousand five hundred square feet.
Is there a water system there, a public water system, and, or is everything on well?
There, there is some, there is some public water there at the school, there are a couple of wells there, but most of the surrounding residences are all on individual wells or septic systems right now that are outside of the Lemon Cove Sanitary District.
So they, they do have water treatment there, is there a plant there, water treatment plant?
Yes. Bill Pensar with the Lemon Cove Sanitary District is here today, and he can provide some details for you in regards to the, the treatment. For the transportation and circulation element, one night, Highway one ninety-eight is recommended as a major arterial. There are several minor arterials, which would be Avenue three twenty-four, State Highway two sixteen. In regards to complete streets, complete streets plan is recommended as part of the community plan process. Avenue three twenty-four connecting the, the elementary school, Sequoia Union School, with Highway one ninety-eight is recommended as a phase one to include consideration for curb gutters, sidewalk, bike lanes, and then phase two along Highway one ninety-eight between Avenue three twenty-four up to the Central Business District portion of the community.
Dave, is Avenue three twenty-eight the, the, you run to the, that east? Where the quarry is?
There are the, most of the quarries are located up to the, to the northeast area, up, up in here.
Seems like there was one that popped out right in downtown area.
Yeah, I believe there is a Lemon Cove granite that is located, yes, adjacent to the.
They had an issue about trucks coming in, up on the highway several years ago.
Wasn't that on the, on the east side of, I thought, was that on the east side of one ninety-eight?
Orientation's a little different, okay.
Yes, there were some concerns in regards to traffic and transportation. Caltrans has currently, several years ago, completed a route concept report, and they anticipate additional operational improvements for the state route over the next twenty-year planning timeframe. They do not at this time plan for any expansion in regards to going from a two-lane conventional to four lanes, but they are anticipating widening shoulders and providing guardrails and other type of safety-related improvements.
No deceleration, acceleration lanes, they're not wide enough, huh?
So the operational improvements that they would consider at an appropriate time that those sections meet warrants would be considered within their planning timeframe. Currently, the existing facility is operating above a minimum level of service, so there are not any immediate improvements planned at, at this time. In regards to the zoning ordinance amendments, we are again looking at three recommendations to incorporate, first, mixed-use zoning overlay, section eighteen point nine, that we've successfully implemented in other communities, which would provide flexibility in regards to the type of uses that would be allowed to promote either a mix of use or a flexibility in use, which would allow property owners to avoid, potentially avoid zoning changes or general Secondly, by right zoning, section sixteen, would be applied to the community as, as well, which would allow an increase in by right commuses, by right uses in the community. Our, our recommendation to your commission today is to recommend to the Board of Supervisors certification and adoption of the initial study mitigated negative declaration under the California Environmental Quality Act, and the mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the twenty nineteen Lemon Cove Community Plan. Adoption of general plan amendment GPA seventeen dash zero zero seven for the twenty nineteen Lemon Cove Community Plan. Amendment to section eighteen point nine of ordinance three fifty-two to establish a mixed-use combining zone, PZC nineteen dash zero one six. Amendment to section sixteen of ordinance number three fifty-two to allow additional by right uses, PZC nineteen dash zero one seven, within the Lemon Cove Community Development Boundary, and an amendment to ordinance number three fifty-two to update zoning district ordinance maps for the Lemon Cove Community Plan rezoning as recommended under PZC seventeen dash zero zero seven to rezone certain properties of Lemon Cove. That concludes staff presentation, and I would be happy to address any additional questions that you may have.
Before I open the public hearing, can you put the, the proposed change map back up so we can have a look at it as people talk to us?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And.
Questions, Dave?
Through the chair, just real quickly, just as a matter of clarification, it is one acre minimums under lamp, to go down below that would require a variance, but the AE-ten's would only allow the residence itself. So unless they meet the minimum acreage requirements, they would not be allowed to put another home site on that, so not, not to worry about that.
So, and my fellow commissioners, before I open the public hearing, we have a chance to question Dave later, so. If not, I'll open the public hearing, members of the public are invited to come forward and comment on this, these changes, and so I invite you to come up, give your name and address for the record, and, so, we have a letter from the Pensars, okay, please give your name and.
My name is Harold Wyatt, I live at two four four three nine, Pogue Avenue in Lemon Cove, in the body of Lemon Cove. In your packet, you'll see a, a petition that was signed by the majority of the homeowner, homeowners and renters of Lemon Cove, the main body. They are against the, the R-three MU zoning. They would prefer to stay as a residential zoning, single-family residential zoning. If the, the folks who are asking for this zoning is, are looking to do a, a business out of their house, that's fine, they can get a special use permit to do something like that, but for them to change that to a local use, that means that we could end up with apartments in the middle of town. We just got done with, with the big help of a supervisor in the county, dozing out six apartments that had been condemned for ten years. They were the biggest eyesore Lemon Cove could ever ask for, and now at the day. And now today, you can look across and, and the big, the parcel is, is cleaned up. It's, it's not a big eyesore anymore. So the community is a little bit gun-shy. They, they, a lot of the folks have spent a lot of money redone their homes up there. We've had three families move in the last, last year who rebuilt some of those older homes and brought them up to code. So Lemon Cove is actually making a change and going in the right direction. Business-wise, 198 is, is where the business should be at because that's where the traffic's at, not, not downtown, not in the middle of Lemon Cove. So anyway, that's what I'm here for.
I noticed that there are two MU, so can you point, Dave? You're concerned maybe with the C3MU, correct?
The, I believe the, the property that is being referred to is located right off of avenue 328, right, right here.
It is right, right in the middle of town.
Not that big rectangular piece?
And there's a further one down south of that one, Dave?
Uh, yes. Two R3 mixed-use requests off of 328 and then just south, south of it, the.
How big are those parcels? They look tiny, but.
They're, they're small. Both of them total less than a half acre. I think point, they both total about point four eight in, in total.
Might be able to get three units on there at the max?
Yeah, and.
Is that a problem? I mean, I'm asking you, so. I probably do agree with you.
We've, we've experienced apartments in Lemon Cove. There's also another set of apartments that were just shut down by the county, just outside of Lemon Cove. And then if you go further north, there's what they call the swamp, and there's about five up there that, that is, it's not a good deal.
It's not in our urban development pa, boundaries? The project you're talking about, the five units?
Uh, yes, it's located just south of, of avenue 330, or excuse me, no, it's, it is located just north of the proposed C3 mixed-use property right in here.
Just as a point of clarification, that was the first apartment complex we talked about as far as the one that was demolished, but the swamp is outside of the urban development boundary.
So where is it? It's outside the UDB? That's the swamp, what you call a swamp right there?
No, no, that, that one's the, the demolished apartment.
Oh, I see. But which, what do you call the swamp? Where's that?
It's further north.
Put the arrow on it. It's, it's.
It's outside the map, boundaries.
Okay. Then we can't do it. I was gonna try to do something about it here, but we can't do anything at, at this area.
But the.
So do we know about that? Is that something that we can talk about later?
Oh, yes. That, that, not right now, but yes.
But the community just wants to stay as a community, single family. We don't, we don't need apartments. We just got over a big headache. Thanks to the county, they really helped us out on it.
I'm kind of in agreement with you, but the housing situation is awful right now, and so people are having a hard time finding places to live. So maybe accomplish that through smaller, single-family homes rather than apartments.
There's homes up there that, that can be bought fairly cheap. There's about four of them right now, but they need, they need some work, but they can be bought for less than a hundred grand.
But I'm saying, there's people that can't even qualify for that, so homeless thing is a, it's an issue right now, so.
Well, there's also pressure from Three Rivers, which has no long-term rentals whatsoever.
Right.
And a lot of people are looking Lemon Cove and would like to live down in that area because that's an easy shot to get to Three Rivers. I know the park has expressed an interest in that, too.
And we've, we've got some of the people that work for the park are renting down there. Person picks up these homes for sale, he can, he can do the same thing.
Yeah. It just seems like we have a, kind of a lack of opportunity to, to serve that need in the future, you know, in what I'm seeing here, so.
Yeah, we just wanna, because when I first moved to Lemon Cove, it was not a desirable spot.
No, I know. I've been through the history.
With the help of the county and the sheriff's department, it's got itself, it's, it's on the right track now.
And some of those smaller lots may be limited by the fact that they don't have sewer or water, it's just how many units they can put on it, so.
Yep, there is, is, is real high in nitrate, so if you have any kind of business that deals with the public, you gotta, you will be supplied water for, bottled water.
Thank you. Are houses that you said the new ones came in and fixed up the properties, are those short-term rentals or owner-occupied?
Owner-occupied.
Oh, okay.
No, I, I take that back. One of them is being rented, but it's being rented to a very close friend. They came in and they completely redid it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Come on up.
Michael Aberisk, I live in Lemon Cove. First of all, I'll say good morning to.
What's your address, sir?
Pardon me?
Your address for the record?
24438 Avenue 328.
Thank you.
I'm the direct neighbor of one of the people that's filing for a rezone. I also have 38 signatures, this is echoing back in my ears, I have hearing aids, I'm gonna step back a little, 38 signatures from immediate neighbors of Mr. Storm that are, that feel the same way I do. I invested my entire savings in a home in Lemon Cove to retire in, and my neighbor has Airstreams on his property, they're just crammed in there, which, which really doesn't bother me, except for the lights. As far as the environmental impact, I don't know who does that, who, who assesses that, but, but I live there, so every year, every year since I've been there, I take my grandkids out to see the owls, and they teach their young how to fly, and they're on the ground. It's quite amazing. They're gone because this property's so lit up. Of course, this is speculation, and, and Mr. Storm's wife told me that they were interested in Airbnb, and he's got those three Airstreams on his property crammed in there. And, and I, I just don't want to live next to a trailer park. I don't mind looking over and seeing his Airstreams, but I would sure be disappointed if there were a full 300 days of the year with renters from whoever, wherever they come from. Another thing is, we don't have any drinking water in Lemon Cove, it has to be shipped in. So I don't know if you're running a business, if you're gonna feed people that water that they say is dangerous to drink. Arrowhead brings our water every other week that we drink. It's bad enough we have to shower in it, and if it's contaminated, it's in our eyes and mouth, you know, I just, anyways, we submitted the 38 names to Mr. Bryant.
Where do you live on 328? Close to the school on that map up there? Maybe Dave could point to it.
28 is farther out. Yes, right, right, right here.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah. And there is a quarry directly to the south of us, and there's big trucks coming in all the time. It's real dangerous to turn in and out of there. People come around that corner real fast. Sometimes my wife, I don't drive, but my wife looks both ways, she pulls out and has to stop because bam, there's somebody speeding down the highway faster than he should be going, but even, even Mr. Wyatt had a car come off the highway into his bedroom. We just don't need, I just don't want the traffic. My house is paid for. I wanted to retire in peace in a nice, quiet residential area, and I'm happy with the way things are right now. I, I don't know if, if, if Mr. Storm.
Step back farther if that ringing's bugging you, okay?
Yeah, it's really, it's really bothering me.
We can hear you.
Okay. You can hear me?
Yeah, is that better?
Yes, it is for me, too. I don't know if, if Mr. Storm had some business, if, if it would affect me adversely, but I'm not looking forward to it. Like I said, put yourself in my place. My house is paid for, I can't go somewhere else. I wouldn't be able to sell my house for enough money to buy a house somewhere else, it's just that simple. I want to retire there, I want to die there, in a nice, quiet place. So that's, that's basically all I have to say. Thank you very much. Thank you for hearing me.
I have a question for staff, probably Aaron on this. Does the existing zoning without the change allow to rent those Airstreams on that property?
Uh, no. Our, our public health code would limit use of an Airstream for residential purposes, period. So, yeah, we had a potential complaint years, years ago, and I believe you or somebody else called about those, and we, we looked into them, whether they were actually being, rented it out for Airbnb or not, and they're, they're not. So they're, they're limited from the outset on this issue. So, no, that's, they, they cannot be rented out for residential purposes.
Johnson, can we do something about the traffic? Something to slow it down?
Slow it down? Oh, the traffic?
28.
Oh, 198. Oh, that would be.
Runner.
At the corner on road 244?
Oh, 328 comes across right here under 198.
Hey, does he's talking?
328.
328.
Quarry trucks come in.
Uh, we, oh, I can look into it and report back next time if that's all right?
Okay, thank you.
Subtle accidents.
Yeah, so what I'll do is, when I get back, I'll, I'll get together the team, we'll look into it, and the next time we meet, I'll, I'll report back.
Thank you. One, one other thing. I don't know if this is the right place to complain, but I have no sidewalk. It's a dangerous sidewalk, it's all busted up, rocks sticking up. I don't know who to call to, to say, could somebody come out and survey this?
Apparently on 324, they're talking about it, so Mr. Vangner can probably help you out on that to get it in the budget, okay?
It's dangerous to even walk on.
On, on where? I'm sorry.
Avenue 328.
Oh, avenue 328. We'll, again, we'll, we'll look into the matter, and I'll, we'll report back to, to the planning commission next time.
Okay.
Thank you.
If it doesn't get fixed, come back.
My name's Bill Pensar, I live at 32811 Road 244. It's on the map up there. Regarding the traffic, highway patrol just recent, not recently, in the last six or seven years, raised the speed limit through Lemon Cove to 45. Even though we're bracketed by 30 mile an hour turns twice at each end of town, had something about a speed trap, you'll have to talk to them. If it went back to 35, it would help a lot of that. That's 198, that's the state. I'd like to say good morning and start by reading a letter that you all have. I'd like to thank the, all those who worked on the community plans for our county. It must be, certainly have been a daunting task. It has been enlightening to view our community through others' eyes that have not resided here for decades, and we realize ours was one, only one of many communities that you were called to address. Your efforts have been noticed. Stretching the urban boundary could very possibly facilitate our pending water project. This being said, we still have concerns about some changes. We're concerned about the proposed zoning MUR3 that allows C2 zone uses right along 244 within the residential district, specifically parcels 113110035 and 113210032. This strip of residence has existed through good times and bad times for many decades. Changes to the residential fabric of the community should be handled in a careful and traditional manner, allowing the community residents to determine their collective fate locally. Please reconsider modifying our residential district by edict, thereby sidestepping the traditional rezone process that favors participatory democracy. Zoning changes tend to be lasting and carry their effects forward through many owners. They are in human terms, permanent. One of the few resources Lemon Cove possesses is an intact residential district along 244. If it is to be violated, we would like a full examination of the traditional rezone process that allows careful and deliberate consideration for all those who would be affected by the change.
Mr. Pensar, you said that your water project may be affected by the increase in the urban area boundary.
Yes.
Is that a positive? I mean, gets more people.
That's a positive.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
We have well, we have wells almost two miles north that have been drilled. We found clean water, which is darn near a miracle. Enough of it. We have to get the water to town.
So how big an area are you gonna provide water for if you get it approved?
Well, we'd provide it along the way from, what is that? That's.
Just kind of.
48.
Yeah. Within the urban area boundary, how, how much, just the northern part, or?
Uh, we would probably start at the top of the urban area boundary and offer water to anybody who wants it. There's not a whole lot up there, there's four or five places. A lot of people have wells, don't want clean water when they realize they have to pay for it. And of course, everybody's well is always the best well. Their neighbor's is never very good, but theirs is always the best. So it gets to be a problem, but we would offer clean water, state clean wa, state regulated clean water.
Would it cover the entire urban area?
Huh?
Would it be available?
We can't go to the entire urban area because we don't have pipes in the entire urban area. But there is talk of extending south some, and there are talks ongoing. But in between, there would be a, a new pipe.
Far south of 324 or 328?
Probably 2324 with some pretty careful agreements this time. We had agreements last time that, with the county, didn't work out so well. We've been managing the county system for 30 years now on our own. You get more money from your recycle than we get from county.
Have you been to TCAG yet?
Huh? We've been to the board of supervisors, we have, we haven't been to TCAG for what purposes?
Money for streets and, you know, that's where they divvy it up to the county, and correct me if I'm wrong, but.
Well, well, through the chair, I, I think whatever occurred in the past was the past, and I think we're looking forward to moving forward, and I know the CAO's office has been in contact with self-help and yourself as far as working towards future, future agreements. But as far as money for roadways, I don't think it would cover the other infrastructure, but there will be money for infrastructure in the future from what we're seeing coming out of the governor and the state. So I, I think you're in the middle of a planning project right now.
In the middle of a planning grant.
Yeah, right now. So I think there's, and we'll see how far that, that goes, but I think, again, I mean, the whole intent behind these rezones and updating the zoning for all these communities that has not been updated since, if they did get updated in the 90s, hasn't been updated since the 70s. So trying to improve the values of the property is a driver to hopefully facilitate getting money into the communities through development, and if not through development, through grants. So I, I think where we sit right now is with this community plan, I don't think it's necessarily gonna hurt future projects, and I think it will help, but this, again, this community plan can't fix all those issues. So, but I think the great thing about a community plan is it does set the record for this point in time, and everything that's been discussed so far from Mr. Pensar and the sanitation district, and for all the utilities, including the concerns about traffic are commented on in this community plan. So it, anybody could reference this in the future. But, you know, it's been a great process working with the sanitation district, and we really do appreciate them making their houses available for us to, to meet at. So I think at this point, you know, it's, I, I'd like to focus a little bit on the, the zoning issue that's before us right now, because this is the only time we've ever had anybody concerned through the 31 community plans we've done about one rezone. So with that, though, I, I don't, I don't think TCAG's necessarily a place where you gotta get fund, funding for water. But as far as if we were able to completely get money for complete streets for these roadway projects, it would be a, a good time at that time to try to address the water piping issue before we improve any of the roadways out there.
I was gonna ask you, where your good water is up at the north end, right?
Just below the dam.
But do you have a pipe anywhere that's come down along 198 or where? You have a. or you have a pipe?
We expect to pi, uh, pipe it along one ninety-eight. The state has ideas that we should drill a tunnel a mile long from...
Tunnel?
Two forty, two forty to, uh, town. They want the whole thing bored, which means it's a million bucks, which...
Why do they want it?
Putting things out of reach real fast.
Why do they want a tunnel?
They want the, anywhere you're in there right away, they want it bored down. Can we get a, a one-mile tunnel?
It's not like a tunnel you can walk through, when they bore it, it's a steel line that you put your pipe in.
It'd be nice if you could walk through.
So, because they don't want, you know, a break and washing out the road. But anyway, we, we've heard and...
It's, it's a side issue, definitely.
Yeah, we'll, moving along, so thank you, and thank you for having your wife come with you, so...
Uh, I wanted to revisit this rezoning of these two parcels. That's why I'm here today.
Yeah.
If you think of Lemon Cove, it's two parallel lines, or one way to think of Lemon Cove, it's two parallel lines. One line is north-south one ninety-eight, the other one is north-south two forty-four. Two forty-four has traditionally been our residential area. One ninety-eight has been our commercial area. These two rezones, which become de facto C-two forever, violate our residential area. This is the second time, and, uh, I've been here to defend the residential backstreet, the two forty-four. It has R-three on it, it has R-two, and it has, uh, R-A, single-family. We think it's inappropriate, we think it violates the process of zoning, we think it's spot zoning, and, uh, it's an overreach. And if we're going to do it, let's sit down and really look at the town and how everything works, and not just put something here and something here and say, well, we did it. We have adequate commercial land, both in-town and the sanitary district and outside. We have, some of it is built and empty. There's a lot of opportunity there, we're not at a dearth for commercial property. And we do need good residential areas, and C-two balkanizes it.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming up. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to, uh, comment on anything we haven't heard? If not, I'll close the public testimony and go to the staff recommendation and the planning commission's comments.
I'll just make a quick comment. Uh, it, it seems to me that, uh, these two properties are being rezoned from requests from the property owner.
That's correct.
And so, and then we've got, uh, I believe it was in the packet there, uh, the signatures from, what, thirty-four of the residents that oppose it?
There's not a lot more than thirty-four either.
All right, there's...
Whole Lemon Cove.
It's their, uh, yeah, this is their home, this is where they live, and, and, uh, I, I don't know that I can support, uh, it looks to me like spot zoning, too. So, just because a couple of guys wanted to be, uh, rezoned in there, and give them some of their opportunities, and that's, and that location on that street, uh, with the neighbors that are opposed, so many neighbors that are opposed to it, I, I think it's, it's not, not my place to really make that change, I don't think. I think that's what they want, and I think that needs to stay that way.
Uh, just through the chair, just briefly, uh, the owner of the property was here last time and did testify as to the fact that the neighboring use was, always has been commercial in nature, so, um, as far as the irregularity, it was, it was already there as far as the zoning, so it would be consistent and harmonious to what was there before. And, uh, we can appreciate the, the signatures, and we can appreciate the, um, desire to, say, single-family residential in that area. But at the same time, um, it, it would be, uh, it would be the first time we, we have not, uh, I just want to put this front of the planning commission, this would be the first time we have not allowed, uh, individual requests to move forward, um, through this process. Staff wouldn't have put it, or suggested this if we, uh, we agreed that this was, quote-unquote, "spot zoning," that the mixed-use overlay is, uh, uh, movement away from traditional zoning. And as far as the traditional zoning practices of, of the county to make them go in a one-off type process, I, I don't know if it really helps or hinders, but when we legislate on a larger basis than the, than the individual rezon, uh, we, we have immense police powers in, in rezoning, um, and all we need is a rational basis, and I think economic development is a rational basis enough to make that determination. But, uh, again, you do have a community that, uh, has petitioned this one, uh, rezon in, particularly in Lemon Cove, so, uh, that does put the onus back, back on you and your discretion to, to make the, the decision, and whether there was a ra, rational basis to rezon these properties or not. If the planning commission feels there was not, um, we would definitely, um, bring that recommendation to the Board of Supervisors.
In the mixed use, wouldn't they still have to get approval, or is that by right?
No, no, it's pretty much, uh, by ri, it all depends. Uh, we have a, a list of intense industrial uses that would still require use permits, but, uh, a, as was also stated, uh, they could still potentially get, or if they don't even need it, they could use, uh, do something less intense than C-two uses there at that property. So, it's just, uh, the, the world would be completely open to them on, once they get the, uh, M U overlay.
Dave, can you put that map back up again, because I can't remember that long.
Oh, Aaron, on the individual...
Close, sir.
The individuals that requested the change, were they already doing something that's bringing them into compliance, or they got something in mind?
Uh, they, they, from what I remember from their testimony last time, I don't think they had necessarily something, uh, in mind. The, the concern is the, the stream, the trailers there, that they could be used all of a sudden for R-three type purposes, rental purposes, that's, that's not the case. But the, uh, um, basically that this would proceed to having more streamlined trailers there, trying to do something more, uh, in that line, or Airbnb-related, would be the, uh, the concern of the, the neighbors. So, I, the, you know, see, the, our, uh, M U overlay, um, is intended to create that type of flexibility, and if it does, if it is approved, then they would be allowed by right to, to pretty much do everything that's allowed under C-two, and everything that's allowed, uh, uh, under our residential zone, so...
Unless the public health was affected such as...
Unless there's a nuisance that we see that's going to be created by it, uh, the planning director has the power, uh, at that point through the M U overlay to say what does comply with CEQA and what would be considered noxious, um, on the other hand. And we usually do that at the, uh, the counter, uh, when the building permits come in.
Aaron, you mentioned that this was already irregular, and it's going to change to maybe more irregular? What's the irregular part that currently exists?
Well, I can't remember all the businesses that the, uh, the testimony received last, last time, so what iterations it's gone through history, it's, uh, it was definitely, uh, more of a, um, I want to say quasi-public, uh, commercial piece of property. So, this would, and that's what the testimony received last time, they, um, this isn't a, a new use in that area, but I, I don't think they really had a good proposal for what it could be used as. Again, this is rezoned, so you'd have to read through the C-two M U to see what's allowed, and it's, it's very broad, so, um, to, uh, try, try to regulate it down now, um, I, I don't think it really changes that much, but, uh, it's more the concern of what that could be in the future.
Could we see, Dave, could we see that side-by-side map that you had coupled before this, and come back to Bill's map in just a bit?
They're both there.
Well, and the, the other aspect is that with the, uh, M U overlay, we do have design guidelines that are required for these, uh, projects, so that the, it limits the nuisance capabilities as far as setbacks, as far as monumentation, as far as, um, well, parking. But, um, and, and again, that we, we have, uh, some standards, but the, does, uh, design guidelines that go along with the M U overlay are, are much stricter.
How big are these parcels?
No, I think, go ahead, Dave.
They're, they're, uh, both parcels total, uh, approximately, uh, less than a half an acre. I think the parcel in question is, um, point one-seven, um, acres.
So... One of them's small.
So, what's the benefit of rezoning it? I, I guess it's so small, what are you going to do? Can't use it for much.
Well, and, uh, through the chair, just looking at the testimony from the minutes, it was used as the post office, meat market, Lemon Cove telephone, and then a beauty shop for a number of years, so they've had some differentiating uses out there through time.
The public testimony is closed, and I wanted to clarify.
That's not a true statement. It's never been a meat market?
I have to okay it first. Hear you, but I have to think about it, so... So, I'll open it up for your comment for clarification, okay? Thank you, Bill, come on.
Okay. It was commercial in the twenties, it was a bank. It became a firehouse. It was a firehouse until the seventies, the county owned it. It's been a residence since the seventies. Market, there was a phone company, their Contel owned it for a while. A little building on one side, and the big building was a firehouse. It's been residential for a very long time. That's the clarification I want to make. It's not a commercial, uh, kind of thing, except somewhat architecturally. Thank you.
So, you are Bill Pensar.
Yes.
You live at three-two-eight-one-one, uh, Road two forty-four in Lemon Cove, so, thank you.
Correct. Thank you.
Okay, we'll close the, and we're going to go to the planning commission for a recommendation on the first, and any changes that you'd like. I sort of agree with you, Ed.
I don't have any problem with the general plan, and, and so I can support, but I just, tell me which one, I, I'm not going to support the rezon, so I'm going to, I think it's the fourth one. Do it, uh, we've got the la, the last one on this page here, that says, uh, ordinance three fifty-two zoning ordinance is set forth for Lemon Cove's consistent with, to rezon certain properties within Lemon Cove.
Well, uh, through the chair, I think I would just limit it to the A P Ns that were noted in the letter, to not include those in the rezon.
That, that, that would be the easiest way to do it. Okay, just, so just amend the...
Basically deny, deny the request for, recommend denying the request for rezones on those two properties.
The rest of the stuff, then, I can support, and it's not going to affect it, right? Okay.
So, you're going to make a motion?
No. Motion.
Okay.
Uh, this is the first approval item, certification and adoption of the initial study, mitigated negative declaration, I S M N D, under the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA, and the Mit, Mitigation Monitoring and Reporting Program, M M R P, for the twenty-nineteen Lemon Cove Community Plan, S C H number two, uh, zero-one-nine-one-one-nine-zero-three-one.
Second, then.
We need the button. We got to have the button.
Oh, there they are.
Their secretary to bring up the buttons. Oh, wait, they are there. Okay, I'm looking at the wrong one.
Oh, wait a minute, how come? Yeah, John, second. Oh, there we go.
Fancy stuff, you know?
I'm sorry, okay.
We had a second by, uh, moved by John Elliott, no, moved by Wayne, and then seconded by...
Need to redo it.
This is the vote, that, uh, the motion that...
It says moved by John Elliott and, and seconded by Steve, so probably needs to be redone.
Yeah, that was done by Wayne Millies was the first.
Can you reset that?
Buttons to push.
Reset the vote?
Motion, yeah.
The motions.
And Wayne Millies made the motion, he made the first.
There we go. Wayne.
Make the move.
Oh, we, oh, sorry.
The second, push the button by whoever made that, okay?
There, now we are.
No, we didn't the first time, but, okay. Call for the vote, everybody vote, please. Motion carried, so, Wayne, you want to did so well on that, you want to make the next motion?
Approve, uh, item number two B, I guess it is, adoption of the general plan amendment, uh, G P A one-seven-dash-zero-zero-seven for the twenty-nineteen Lemon Cove Community Plan.
Through, through the chair, uh, if you could, uh, frame it as a recommendation to approve, that would be...
Okay, uh, these were both recommend, recommendations to approve, okay?
Yes, so start, start with the language we're recommending.
It doesn't say that in our staff thing, but that's okay.
What did we say, Clint?
We're recommending, we're not approving, we're recommending to the Board of Supervisors on these last, this one and the one before, so that's what you're doing, recommending to the Board of Supervisors. So, that was your motion, right, Wayne?
Yes, sir.
And do I have a second, please?
I'll take it.
Vote, please. Okay, let's go to the next one, a recommendation, we'll do that, Wayne.
Amendment to...
You got to make a motion to recommend?
I'm going to make a motion to, uh, approve amendment to section eighteen. Said approve.
Recommend. To the Board of Supervisors.
Okay, I'll get out my, just, okay, never mind. Amendment to section eighteen dot, uh, dot nine of the ordinance number three fifty-two, the zoning ordinance to establish a mixed-use combining zone, number P Z C nineteen dash zero-one-six, within the Lemon Cove Urban Development Boundary, U D B.
Is that what it...
Not at this time, not at that. You'll do that last, the last one, on the ordinance map.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second, oh.
Vote?
There you go. Ed, beat me. Shake your finger.
Okay, motion carried. So, Wayne, you want to make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors?
This is complicated, this is complicated. A recommendation to the Board to approve an amendment to section sixteen of ordinance number three-five-two, the zoning ordinance to allow additional by-right uses, number P Z, P Z C nineteen dash zero-one-seven, within the Lemon Cove Urban Development Boundary, U D B.
Second? Roll call.
Maria was, uh, that says moved by Maria.
Yeah, I pushed the button. He said second.
He's the one who moved.
It just says it.
Oh. Yeah, okay. We got to take it off again, sorry, I jumped the gun on that.
Made by Wayne Millies, and it was seconded by...
You want to make the motion?
McElroy, please.
You're doing good, Wayne.
Need to reset that one as well.
Did you, okay, I'm going to reset the whole...
Yeah, reset it.
We'll do it again.
There we go.
All right, I made the motion.
Maria's going to second?
Okay.
Vote?
There we go.
Okay, motion carried, now we're going to go to the last one, and can you do that? Winding out the two A P Ns that you want to remove.
Yeah, let's see, I don't have the...
Right here.
Have them right here? Okay, I see them.
You'll make a move.
Well, I'd make a recommendation to the Board to deny, um, amendment?
No, he could just say approve.
The amendment, but to recommend denial of the request to rezon those two properties.
Okay. And I'd make a, a motion to recommend to the Board to approve the amendment, ordinance number three-five-two, the zoning ordinance as set forth in the zoning district ordinance as maps, number P Z C seven...
as maps, number PZC seventeen dash zero zero seven, for Lemon Cove, uh, consistent with the, uh, twenty nineteen Lemon Cove community plan, to rezone certain properties within Lemon Cove, uh, and specifically exempt parcels.
Deny.
Or deny, okay. Deny parcels, uh, one one three dash one one zero dash zero three five, and one one three dash two one zero dash two three two.
For a zone change.
Pardon me?
Zero three two.
Zero, oh, okay, I'm sorry. It is zero three two. And staff, that, those are the correct numbers I'm citing, I'm assuming.
Correct.
Okay, all right.
The move button. Second, please.
Second.
Vote. Did we get that right? Was, okay.
I got it.
Okay. Motion carried, I think.
Mr. Diaz has not voted.
Who hasn't voted?
Is clear.
Yes, he did.
So, uh, motion carried, we denied those two parcels. Did you all hear that? Okay, and so.
I'm watching.
Oh, hey, well, you too. Thank you. Good.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks for the staff report.
So now that they would have to come in specifically if they want to get those rezoned, right?
Uh, through the chair, uh, first it would be a recommendation to the board, so they could, uh, rule otherwise. Um, so they, they'd have a chance to discuss this in front of the board, and yes, they could come in at a future date for an individual rezone, but, uh, we'll, we'll have discussions with them and see what their, their real goal is here.
Okay.
We understand we're not the final say, the board of supervisors has to take our recommendations and agree. So you wanna go to that meeting.
Yeah. Be sure you monitor that process.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Okay, moving on to director's update.
Um, to, uh, update the Aaron, Aaron Bach, A-A-R-O-N-B-O-C-K, for all newspaper writers and/or people sending letters to Tulare County RMA. I am the assistant director for economic development and planning for the resource management agency, just for the record. Mr. Vanderpoel said I wasn't sarcastic enough, so I thought I'd start off with sarcasm.
You sarcastic?
What's that?
I was saying.
I know. So, um, I just wanted to give you an update of what we've done over the last year and what we're looking forward to next year, given this is our first meeting of two thousand twenty. Um, just, uh, so the planning commission is aware, RMA, um, has, with our team of engineers, uh, Dave Bryan, Susan Simon over there, commented on every, uh, GSP that's been produced, uh, by all the, uh, GSAs within Tulare County over the last month. Um, it's been quite an effort. We've been working with Greg Young, who was our consultant for the general plan water section, um, in reviewing all the groundwater sustainability plans. Um, and honestly, we, uh, we were hopefully successful in getting them to make some of the changes we requested, and I think it has been and been, and we have been told, even in front of the water commission, that we were helpful in, uh, getting some changes made to those, uh, GSPs that hopefully will help DWR, um, as they review those. Uh, so those are due by the end of the month, and most of the, um, as I said, most of the GSPs are still under review and are moving towards approval. And, uh, the thing is that they do require a coordination agreement to be approved before they can submit the actual plans themselves. So, uh, we're in the process of looking at QIAs, um, coordination agreement, and that looks like it's, uh, moving forward, uh, to, to hopefully get there over the next week. So, uh, given that, uh, the Thule and the Kings, uh, still have to, to get done as well, so it's all, it's looking like a lot of it's gonna come down to the wire, uh, but hopefully they can get those done, and, uh, hopefully, uh, DWR, uh, isn't, uh, isn't coming down here anytime soon. Um, uh, so you know Dana Metlin retired, and it's, uh, going to be difficult, but we're looking to fill that position. Um, we are currently working on software to simplify the graphics and make the reports more consistent, so that, um, we aren't as reliant on, uh, staff, uh, to make up the difference in our efficiencies. Uh, over the previous year, we have done five hundred and fifty projects, which is a little bit less than the six hundred plus we did last year. Um, we did complete, uh, four community plans and had only one appeal. Um, over the next year, we are looking to, uh, review the STR ordinance and bring it back to the board, uh, with their suggestions. Um, we're looking to finish the Cutler-Rosi community plan. Environmental studies are underway, and we're wrapping up outreach in the IR in the spring. We're looking to kick off the Springville community plan, and, um, what may become a multi-year process, hopefully not as in-depth as the Three Rivers community plan, but, uh, definitely as interested parties there. Um, we are kicking off the Kingsburg area plan, and we are beginning discussions with the city of Delano for an area plan in that, uh, north of the city there. Studies and discussions are underway with both cities. Uh, we have the first meeting in Kingsburg coming up in February. Uh, we'll have an upcoming meeting with landowners in the city of Delano, hopefully within the next month. Uh, we've finalized, uh, the final last decisions with the city of Kingsburg in regards to the specific plan, and that was, uh, who's gonna be the waste taller? We had a discussion on Monday, and, uh, it's within Peña's franchise, so even though Mid Valley works with the city, um, everybody agreed that the franchise area for Peña's, so they would be the waste taller for that, uh, subdivision. Um, that subdivision's moving towards phase two. Homes are built, Kern Street's improved, uh, they have all the, uh, utilities approved, uh, so they're, they're gonna probably move pretty quickly to, to build out that project. Uh, RMA itself is gonna administer the CFD, and, uh, we are working to actually, uh, work with the Board of Equalization of creating a tax area. That'll be a first for me to ever do. Um, we updated the tra, we're gonna update the traffic element of the general plan to change from level of service to vehicle miles traveled. Studies are underway, and we have to complete that by July, uh, per state law. We will receive the grant money and agreement for SBE two, hopefully within the next couple weeks here, and, uh, we're working with, uh, HCD and OES to amend the safety and environmental jet section, environmental justice section to the general plan. Um, we have also hired a dairy planner to update the ACFP and comply with the Sierra Club settlement, so that's underway. Um, yeah, yesterday, there was a little bit of a discussion about the Rural Valley Lands Plan scoring criteria, and I think that'll become more of an issue as we, uh, update the general plan for the hydrology section, uh, based on sigma. And, uh, the question becomes, does the RVLP make sense anymore, given sigma and water restrictions? Uh, and maybe we'd end up with something like a separate point category for the white areas that aren't covered for surface water and/or by any irrigation districts. Uh, as I said, the hash project is moving towards phase two, and yesterday, the board approved the Cutler-Rosi self-help final map. Um, so that, uh, project's moving forward, and the county's even offered some of its home funding, uh, home ground funding to assist in, um, getting some of those homes built in, uh, Cutler-Rosi. Uh, it's only thirty-seven, uh, lots, and you wish it was more, but I, I think this is a good step forward, uh, for development in the Cutler-Rosi area. Uh, grants-wise, uh, still working on the Metheny Tract, uh, TCC grant, and, uh, we received funding for four complete streets projects over the next year, and, uh, those, uh, we've had, uh, preliminary meetings on getting those four complete streets projects for, um, Metheny Tract, uh, outside of Exeter, and, uh, can't remember the other two off the top of my head, but, uh, again, we, we're getting down to the nitty-gritty as far as complete streets. We've done them for almost every community out there, so, um, we're also working with the, uh, city of Porterville on the kind of Rails to Trails project. Um, Johnson here's kind of managing it from the county side. Not a whole lot of that project is in the county, but, uh, the fact is that TCAG has shown great interest, and so has the state, in doing a Rails to Trails project, um, in that area. Uh, as far as codes, uh, code and inspections, uh, we lost one of our main inspectors to the city of Kingsburg, but we're looking to fill this position and other positions to, uh, not only keep up, but expand our ability to respond and address building concerns. Uh, we've had, uh, over four hundred and fifty, uh, building permit applications over the last month, uh, as builders try to get in before the new codes hit. Um, so it's been very busy, uh, Christmas season, and just trying to keep up. Um, the, and we wanna thank, uh, fire and environmental health for being able to, to keep up with that, that type of production on the building permit side. On the economic development front, uh, we're really focusing on existing projects and trying to facilitate the projects, especially in Goshen right now, um, right there on Betty Drive and, uh, sixty-seven, there's probably three, three big projects that are, uh, we have the building permits coming in for right now, so we're trying to, uh, facilitate some traffic, uh, traffic measures to, um, make sure we can keep the free flow of traffic from Visei to the, uh, ten, ten to ninety-nine. Um, a little bit harder to do after, after the fact, but, uh, the developers have been really helpful as we work through that. And also, uh, we have quite a bit of solar interest right now in the, the county, and, um, uh, as far as an economic development process, it's really gonna be a little bit more difficult to work with some of the local irrigation districts and others where we need, uh, access to, to get the power lines across and everything else like that. So that's really where our economic development focus has been over the last few weeks. So, uh, unless you have anything to add, Hector, Public Works?
Hi, Johnson Vang with Public Works. Uh, great to be back. It feels like it's been a while since I've seen you guys, so, uh, just briefly, as mentioned, speaking of grants, we are gearing up for, uh, two, uh, funding, uh, cycles that will be coming up. Uh, one, which I brought before, would be the active transportation program. Last time, it was cycle four, so we are gearing up for the fifth cycle. And with that program, we've been really successful since, um, the birth of that, uh, funding source, so we've accumulated, uh, millions of dollars to improve, uh, communities throughout the county, so we're, uh, we're looking forward to that. We're also gearing up to, um, apply for, uh, the highway safety improvement program. Uh, this will be the tenth cycle, so it's been, these cycles, they release, um, applications every two years, so it's been two years since I've last updated you guys on this.
Johnson, is that where the money's gonna come to improve Harvest?
Harvest is, so Harvest right now is, it's funded through Measure Regional Funds, so we do, it, it's, uh, so these funds that I brought up, ATP and HSH, they're federally funded, but Measure Regional Funds are being used to improve Harvest, and.
That's gonna happen soon?
Correct, yeah, they, it's in the work. Goshen is kind of a, um, I wouldn't say a, we're kind of lazy, we're focused a bit of Goshen now, we have Harvest, we have Road Sixty-four, uh, we have a, a lot of improvements going on there, so yes, Harvest is in the works. We have, uh, one of our, um, top road engineers working on that project, so.
The road looks like somebody dropped bombs in it.
Uh, also, I believe, if I'm mistaken, and, uh, I can, I wouldn't double-check this, but I believe a segment of Harvest is not maintained by the county. It's a non-maintained road, and so that, maybe that can kind of be why it's, it looks like the way it does. But I think through the design processes, uh, again, as, I can look more into it if you're interested, and then report back next time on Harvest, on, on how the design is.
There are bombs moved there, I mean, they have, you know, big trucks.
Yeah, the, the, there's been a lot of changes to that area, and again, um, there are two projects that, uh, definitely next time I'll report back on, that would be, um, Harvest being one of them, and the other one would be Road Sixty-four, so. Uh, but we're also, yeah, again, going back to the highway safety improvement program, we've, I think in the past few years, we've accumulated about close to seven million dollars worth of safety improvements throughout the county. And, uh, fortunately enough, too, we also recently acquired about seventy-two thousand dollars to prepare a local road safety plan. And this one's gonna be data-driven, um, a plan that's a data-driven, and requires to work closely with sheriff and other departments to formulate a, a game plan. So in the previous, in the past, we would, for a, um, highway safety improvement program, we would really just look at the collision and then find a hotspot, and then come up with, um, countermeasures, and then we apply, and we've been really successful. But, and now, um, the, the, the highway safety improvement program, they, uh, want agencies to develop a national safety plan, where, uh, we actually work with sheriffs and other departments to develop a comprehensive plan. So, uh, we're looking forward to doing that. Uh, it, it, we're required to complete that safety plan in, in three years' time, but I think that, um, we should be able to finish that, uh, in a much, uh, like, much sooner, but, uh, ultimately, we'll, we'll see in time. We also have twenty million dollars worth of, uh, over twenty million dollars worth of road rehab projects going this summer, so we're really focusing on, this year, uh, we're really focusing on, on our farm and market routes, our main archerials to, uh, 'cause a lot of our, those roads are not, uh, doing too well, so we are putting a lot of emphasis on maintaining the higher, uh, eighty, uh, traffic roads. We also have a number of, uh, community projects, uh, throughout the county, and, uh, more, uh, lastly, we also have several bridge projects that'll be going to construction this fall as well. Um, and if, as we closer, if you guys want more details on the bridge projects that'll be going to construction, then I'll be more than happy to, uh, give you information on that. And the last thing I'd like to, uh, bring up would be our county improvement standards, so this is gonna be a huge endeavor with, uh, with many departments, and then now, uh, Aaron, uh, the director of planning here, he, he's gonna be a part of, really involved in, uh, really, uh, he'll be really involved with the process as well. Our, I believe the last time our, we did a significant update was back in the seventies, if I'm not mistaken, right? So, uh, many, uh, many items in the standards are up to date, um, so, out of date, sorry, out of date, so we are working closely, not just Public Works, but really with, uh, with planning and building and fire, you name it, uh, to really, to bring it up to, uh, to really modernize and bring it up to where it should be. So this is, I believe our target is, is to have it fully, um, complete by the end of two thousand twenty, if I'm not mistaken. But, uh, so we are gonna be pushing, uh, this project along, and it's, and again, I think every, every department, um, they're excited for the change, so, but it's just gonna require a lot of coordination with the team, so, uh, again, as, as we make, uh, progress, then we'll, we'll bring it up to, uh, to, again, if you're interested. Uh, that's all I have, but, uh, just as a, uh, note to myself, so I will follow up on the AMR two twenty-eight safety issues for Lemon Cove, so I'll, I'll get together with staff and I'll report back next time, at least, uh, what's within county right away. And also, there was a comment, uh, about safety concerns regarding the speed, uh, forty-five through Lemon Cove. That unfortunately, uh, Stairway One Ninety-eight is within, uh, Caltrans restriction, but I believe what I can do at a minimum is reach out to them and let them know, uh, like, the concerns, and then what they'll do in there is look at their speed study and see if it was justified. Typically, uh, again, speed, a speed change, we, we can't just, like, change it, I will, uh, typically a speed study would have to be done, and, uh, and based on that speed study, then we can, we can raise or lower by five, five or so. So if, for example, the speed study says, hey, it's, it's supposed to be forty, we can, we can lower it by five, like, maximum, there's a limit, I, I can't recall it off the top of my head, but, uh, we, if it says, if it's supposed to be forty, they came up to forty-five, four, I think there's a plus and minus there, but I don't know, I don't have that data, so I can reach out to Caltrans, let them know, and then whatever they provide, I'll report back to you guys.
They've certainly had their quota of fatal accidents right at that corner, so.
I.
That would help.
Yeah, I'm not too familiar with it. Uh, unfortunately, I'm not too familiar with the collision in that area, but, um, we are developing a local road safety plan, and through that, it's gonna, it's, we're gonna have data, like, anything, every project we do will be data-driven, so we will know, um, with certainty, like, where the hotspots are for sure. And like, especially the fatal and severe accidents, those are the ones that we really need to target. But, uh, other than that, if you have any questions, let me know, but next time I will report back on the items I mentioned.
Thank you.
I have a question for Aaron. Uh, Governor Newsom's real hot on this homeless, uh, thing going on now, has the county had any thoughts or, or prepared for any mandates that may come down from the city?
Well, uh, through Health and Human Services. Well, through Health and Human Services and through Supervisor Shacklin, they, we do have a regular homeless committee meeting. I think there's some suggestions from nonprofits that have kind of been put on the table in the county, but really, I think the, the focus and the drive on the homelessness, and they have actually someone at HHSA who is hired to, to look into this. So I think we're prepared on, on many fronts to address the homelessness issue, and I think as far as the planning's concerned, we are, with the SB two money, looking more so at the low-income housing aspect that does lead to homelessness, so we, and I don't really see a way to address that necessarily through zoning or through land use, but I think some of the policies that we utilize as far as grant funding to, to build or to refurbish homes that ultimately leads to homelessness will, will, will help, and as much as planning can, can help the process. But again, HHSA is really driving that.
Amy Shacklin, she's involved with quite a few organizations. Self Help has taken a convalescent home, converted it into, I think it's a footbed, homeless shelter for people to sleep at night. I'm president of the Samaritan Center, and we have been constantly approached to provide health care for homeless. It's a complicated process because Visalia PD has seven police officers. Their full-time job, not to take calls, is to respond to the homeless. And, you know, I used to work there, and one of the things the officer told me, he said, "They're very unpredictable people," and so it's a real challenge, because you never know what it is that they're going to do. So it's, it's here, and then, not going away.
There's lots of people working on it, so.
As far as code and the Public Works Department, you know, besides the cleaning up of the camps, you know, I mean, there is that, that effort to, if we are going to condemn a house or something like that, that we try to work through, you know, Health and Human Services to get them housing, so there is an effort, always an effort to, to be sensitive to that. But it was interesting to me, the, we assisted in the bond for phase two of Self Help's projects in Goshen, and that actually had a homelessness requirement, I believe it was six units to actually house in Goshen there. So the grant funding's going to, that's going to Self Help, it's going to require that in the future as well, so. We'll see what other requirements they put on our planning grants in the future for homelessness, but yeah, and that's our intent, Dave and myself here, as far as long-range planning, to see how we can address that through the updates to our general plan right now, and see what the, we can do with the SB two funding to at least acknowledge or see what kind of policies we could put into the general plan to, to help in that matter. But really, it's, like, like you're saying, it's really localized issue, it's a very unique situation, it's not something that you can broadly just rezone for homelessness, it's a, it's a little bit more complicated than that.
We, we offer through Dr. Guzman, he goes out to homeless encampments and provides health care wherever they're living. A lot of these folks don't want to go to the hospital, and they're sick, and they've got bad diseases, and so we attempt to treat those. So Tulare County is a, is a kind county, there, people are reaching in their pockets and spending money, and our clinic is 100% paid for by the community, no government loans, nothing. You know, we just spend $10,000 or $12,000 a month in medications. We have one paid employees through the hospital, it's all retired doctors and nurses, and so I don't know if other communities are like this. People have community consciousness here. I'd like to make one comment before, and it's mainly a procedural, as you, most of you know, because I, I always let you know that I'm ex-law enforcement, but each of us has a button here to our left hand, and if you push that button, hopefully, the sheriff is coming, or the police. And we, and we had, had it happen, and I noticed our monitors light up, they start blinking, it says, "Everybody leave." Well, just as a policy as your chair, if one of you sees a gun or you feel threatened, push the button, and I want everyone to go out that door and leave, including the staff, because you're the ones that are going to get it before we do, and you have to walk across my back to get out that door, but, and that brings up the issues. Last time, someone from the supervisor's office came around through this door, and I thought, boy, that was dumb. Somebody should come to that door to make sure it's open, and that door should be open for every one of our meetings in case we have to leave. And if you don't want me to, if you don't want to ask the supervisors, I will ask, but that should be open as an emergency to get the hell out of here.
We'll ask the question in, in light of that concern.
And how that happened is we had a planning commissioner here, there's some files there that the supervisors get memos and things, he would stand there and look through their files. I mean, that's not, we shouldn't be looking at that, and so we can use the bathroom, we can go in the conference room if we have to recuse ourselves, but we shouldn't be wandering around and shouldn't taking somebody's sandwich out of the refrigerator. I only did that one time, but...
What about donuts on the table, and are they okay?
No, don't eat the donuts, because they're bad for you.
I know.
If staff says it's, I mean...
So anyways, is everybody in agreement on that, if that makes sense?
All cars.
Yes.
And in the meantime, I have cookies.
If there's no further business...
No, I had a question, not quite, on a lighter note. Our chief environmental officer, as I like to refer to you as. I know SB 50 is coming back down the pipe again. This is trying, the state trying to free up more construction of homes by taking, cutting a deal with, with the cities, and I guess, I guess the counties, I'm not sure, I haven't heard, it's more about the cities, to lighten up on their assessments and fees to allow builders, home builders, because the home builders are complaining, they can't build a low-income house. And so I'm wondering, is the county, do you all have any goals for housing units for 2020? Are you looking at how many? I know Visalia probably does, but I'm saying, does the county?
We always have our regional housing need numbers, so we're at 7,500 basically.
500 for the year?
No, not per year, overall, for the outlook of our housing element. So basically by 2030 for the general plan. The, that's unattainable by any, by any stretch of the imagination, where we're doing between 150 and 200 a year. I, I think this year we'll be well ahead of that, given the development that was approved by the planning commission for SME and the Summerland Homes Project in Kingsburg, but, you know, as far as, and the state's aware, HCD's aware that some of these RENA numbers are just not attainable by...
The state's behind too, right?
What's that?
State is very behind in that, in their goal.
Oh, oh yeah, you know, and it goes back to late 60s and Jerry Brown wanting to put 100,000 homes in California per year forever. Yeah, and it's, yeah, you can only do so much as a jurisdiction. I mean, we do live in a free-market economy that doesn't allow us just to tell developers to develop homes, so. But the SB 50 is really trying to get the SEQA mitigation costs down, and since the county doesn't charge fees, there's no mitigation costs, so that's, that's really not an issue for this county.
That was my other question, yeah, about SEQA. Is there a lightning of regulations from SEQA?
For, for the Tulare County Environmental Division, lightning on SEQA? Yeah, I just think they're, we take SEQA as seriously as we need to take it to approved projects.
One thing...
I mean, as far as, I, I don't see a big change, you know, we tried to not, not overly focus our SEQA efforts on every project here, so we do what is necessary to get the projects through the process.
A number of weeks ago, just on the subject of homeless housing, I met a lady named Adrienne Hillman, who started an organization called Salt and Light.
Yes.
Oh, you know that? You're familiar with it then?
Yeah, and that was the nonprofit I was mentioning, I was talking about homelessness, that she's been working with Mr. Washam and Supervisor Shacklin on a potential project.
It's Adriana.
Okay, Adriana, sorry.
Yeah, so we've been involved, we've had discussions, and nobody's plunking down any money on property to, to get the ball rolling.
Their family could support that so easily, that's, you know, Hillman and the, you know, the grain people, so.
So yeah, we, we would do everything in our efforts with the Public Works Department, planning to get a, a project going as quickly as possible, including streamlining SEQA, but the, you know, we just haven't had an application yet.
I think they're close to looking at some properties or getting one, but that's not for me to say, because I don't know.
Right, right.
Through the chair, if I may, Hector Gerchey, from Environmental Planner, just a little elaboration from what Mr. Bach said. When we get assigned our RENA number, part of that process too is, is not just land availability, but what are we doing as a jurisdiction, a city or a county, to, to make it as easy as we can for someone to cite property, they're saying, hey, this is an ideal property, but with them having to say water, sewer, schools, the whole kit and caboodle, it's not just houses, you know, and all the public services that come with it. What we try to do too, and then when you look at a nexus, you can only charge somebody so much, what is it worth? Well, that's why the one I always use is, is us in government make a photocopy. You know, the first copy will cost you 10 cents, the next one will cost you a nickel thereafter. It's all about cost recovery, we don't make profit, and the private developer is in it to make profit, it's a business. You got a Self Help who isn't in it, you know, to make a profit, that's a different story, but for SEQA purposes, you know, we try to mitigate down to the extent practicable. You know, that's what we try to do, and some of it's not necessarily mitigation, it could be a, a condition of approval, it could be a project design feature, there's stuff in there that could bring some costs down, so we're, we're doing what we can, but within our, our limitations of adequately addressing SEQA.
They got to go.
There's no other, there's no other business, I need another cookie, meeting the church.
Do you want to take some? Ah! You know which ones you're grabbing? You're grabbing the sugar one? And there's sugar and oatmeal raisin.
Don't hit your front of these pots.
Where's the oatmeal raisin?